I'd like to call the October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three school board, Lacy School Board meeting to order. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and The Beacon on January twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, and by posting the notice in the Forkett River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacy Township Clerk as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Armato, here. Mr. Conity?
Here.
Mr. Armato?
Here.
Mrs. Claus?
Here.
Mr. Pallino?
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes, present. Could I have a motion for executive session?
Be resolved that an executive session be convened for the purpose of discussing confidential student matters, including but not limited to harassment, intimidation, and bullying, confidential legal matters, including but not limited to the current caseload, and confidential personnel matters. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. The length of the executive session is estimated to be approximately sixty minutes, after which the Board shall reconvene and proceed with business at seven P. M. Action may be taken. Motion?
Motion, Peters.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving into private.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. We'd like to get started with our regular meeting. Thank you for coming tonight. And I'm going to turn the meeting right over to our student representatives, Anthony and Charlotte. Who would like to go first?
Hi, everyone. On October second, we had the new student breakfast, and thank you so much for everyone who attended. Our homecoming court nominations were sent out through Google Form October sixteenth, and we actually got our decisions today on who got homecoming court. Homecoming admissions was that the paperwork was emailed to students and parents and guardians on October second. Paper copies of the forms are available outside W. one oh eight. All fines had to be paid before getting your ticket, and random drug testing form must be filled out. The first week, from October tenth to twelfth, tickets were twenty-five dollars, and this week they were thirty dollars.
I'm going to take it over. October sixteenth to the twentieth is Homecoming Spirit Week, which was this week. Students should check their school emails for details. October twentieth is the Homecoming Football Game, which is tomorrow night. Show up. Homecoming Court will attend the football game, meet at the football field ticket booth within five minutes left before halftime. October twenty-first will be the dance, which is this Saturday, from six to nine P. M. in the LTHS Gym. Monday, November thirteenth, is going to be our next SGA meeting. And that's it for right now. But I'd like to ask Brody Sager to meet the podium. At this time, please give a round of applause to his family who is here tonight. For the month of October, the Student Government Association of Lacy Township High School Unsung Hero Award selected the incredibly driven Brody Sager. Brody is a part of the STEM Academy and is a vital contribution to our school's wrestling program. He's a hard worker both in and out of the classroom. This trait alone will push him to become successful after his journey at the high school, where his family and peers are so eager to see what he will accomplish in his future. With that being said, the Student Government Association is happy to announce Brody Sager as the October Unsung Hero. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our Superintendent, Dr. Pereira.
Thank you, Mrs. Downing. I also want to congratulate Brody and his entire family, and thank you to our student representatives. Before we begin our meeting tonight, I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the profound impact that the tragic loss of our student, Deshaun Winter, has had on our entire school community. Losing a member of our school family is a reminder of the deep connections that we have with all of our students. At this time, a moment of silence for Deshaun Winter. Thank you. Okay. As I have every month, I do want to acknowledge our two student artists, Stephen Haddit and Billy Chacon Maron. Both designed the cover of the Superintendent's Report and the Board Agenda. So congratulations to them. Round of applause. Yesterday, we shared some amazing news. We were patiently, very patiently, waiting to announce that we were awarded the preschool expansion aid, and we are beyond thrilled. There are a lot of people that we can commend for that, but Mr. Zalinski, Mrs. Amos, and Mrs. Krikowski played a huge role in getting that application written and submitted. So we're going to brag a little bit because we were told by the Department of Education that of the twenty-six applications that were submitted and approved, I don't know if all of them were approved, but of the applications that were submitted, ours was one of the best that they had seen. And of the twenty-six school districts that received the preschool aid, ours was the second highest, right behind Camden. So our allocation is about three point three million dollars. And now that we know, we turn our attention to finalizing our plans. So just this afternoon, Mr. Zalinski, Mrs. Krikowski had an information meeting for the parents that are registered, and much more to come on that. Mr. Zalinski, anything you want to add?
It's going to be busy.
It's going to be busy. Yeah.
Lots to do.
Yeah, so again, kudos to Mr. Zalinski, Mrs. Amos, and Mrs. Krikowski for submitting an outstanding application. Round of applause to our entire district. So the Milpon School is already bustling with little feet, and in a few short weeks, there are going to be approximately two hundred and thirty-three more little feet. So we are really, really excited. All right, we have lots of presentations tonight. That's why our lecture hall is so full. We love to see it. And we're going to start with summer reading. So I know we've had some beautiful weather, but unfortunately, summer is in our rearview mirrors. But something that we haven't done yet is recognize our summer reading winners. So the name of the program is called the Summer Reading Navy Paw Awards, and our students, in spirit of this competition, read for more than thirty-two hours, and many of them are here with us tonight. So the principals and the supervisors of our elementary schools are going to come up. The students who participated are going to get a certificate, and they've also been entered into a raffle to win an Amazon Fire Seven tablet. So three of those, correct? Three of those are being raffled tonight, and that was donated by the Lacy Township Administrators and Supervisors Association. So thank you to the LTASA for that donation. Without further ado, I am going to start tonight's presentation with Mrs. Cellini, who is the supervisor at Forkett River School.
On behalf of all of us from the Forkett River School, I'm very excited to present our summer readers, who reached the Navy level of participation by reading thirty-two hours or more while they were off of school. As with any skill, practice makes you better, and it's certainly that way with reading as well. As Dr. Sue said, the more you read, the more things you'll know, the more that you learn, the more places you'll go. As each student's name is called, please join me and proudly display your certificate, and then we'll have the exciting drawing for the tablet. Congratulations to Maisy Barra, Joseph Close, and Kenzie Close, Madeline Casper, and Adeline Strater. All right, now the moment we've all been waiting for. The winner of the Forkett River School's tablet is Sadie Holland. All right, we have one more round of applause. It's now my pleasure to introduce the administrative team from Lenoka Harbor School, Dr. Brewer and Mrs. Kil Murray.
And great minds think alike. I had the same quote, so I scrambled to get another one very quickly. But on behalf of Lenoka Harbor School, we'd also like to congratulate all of our Navy Paw Summer Readers this year. And I want to say that reading is to the mind as to what exercise is to the body. So, very good, boys and girls, you've expanded your minds. So I'm going to read the names, and Dr. Brewer is going to award your certificates. Jude Beeble, you can come up with your brother Jonathan, Kira Barker, Gabriela Fodderero, Jackson Fuge, Emma Hands, Leah Hands, Bradley Hayden, Kirsten Mendato, Anna Marcus, Grace Nicholson, We also had several Navy Paw Nation winners that could not join us tonight. They were Natalie Arnoney, Henry Giamara, Amy Pine, Anthony, and Roman Tretola. So congratulations, boys and girls. So Amy could not be with us tonight, but a funny story is, she told me, you know, I've been reading this every year, and it's about time I win. So Amy won, so great job. Boys and girls, thank you all. You are all winners. Amazing job, boys and girls. Thank you. And I'd like to introduce the administration from Cedar Creek, Ms. Holly Nemick, and Mr. Ed Saboko.
All right, thank you for this honor to present this award to our young Lacy Lion Readers at Cedar Creek Elementary School. Something that not everyone may know is this was a completely voluntary summer reading program. So all the students winning tonight achieved those thirty-two hours by choice. Maybe a little pressure from home, but they agreed to do it, and that's not always the case. So we're just so proud of you all. We're going to start with Michael Baldassari, All right, congratulations, Cedar Creek Lions. It's time for the drawing of the Cedar Creek Fire Tablet. President Ekerson, would you be kind enough to draw the name?
I was going to say, I don't remember all the names. I'm all grand.
Okay. So congratulations again to all of our summer readers. Nothing like reading a good book, so I'm glad that we had so many readers and so many hours of it. Fantastic. All right, so we start with the littles. Now we move to the bigs. So Mr. King, Seniors of the Month.
Thank you, Dr. Pereira. Board of Education members, members of the audience, it gives me great pleasure to go to the other end of the spectrum and celebrate our seniors to all of our younger students here. Keep reading, keep doing what you're doing. You will soon be up here as well in a few short years. Our first senior this month to celebrate is Autumn Megan. Autumn, come on down. A round of applause for her family who's here in the studio as well. And we're going to watch a short video on Autumn now.
All right, here we are to celebrate October's Seniors of the Month. Our first senior of the month is Autumn Megan.
Hi, my name's Autumn Megan, and I am proud to be named October Senior of the Month for Lacy Township High School.
Congratulations, Autumn, on being named Senior of the Month. I can't think of anybody more deserving than you.
Autumn Megan, congratulations on earning Senior of the Month.
Hi, everyone. Hi, Autumn. Congratulations on being named Senior of the Month. I am super, super proud of you. This is a well-deserved recognition, and you should really enjoy this moment.
At Lacy High School, I am involved in choir and drama club, and I am also the captain of the field hockey team this year.
Autumn is just involved in so many things here at the high school. She's the station manager this year at WLTS. She takes on most, if not all, of our big directing projects, and she's an outstanding editor.
Autumn, in my tenure as a field hockey coach, you were probably one of the most technically sound players I've ever seen. I'm super, super proud of you. You definitely have been putting your senior captain leadership skills to the test this year, but you are always positive, always in good spirits, and always definitely wanting to be there and to be there for your teammates.
Some of my favorite memories here at Lacy High School would probably be homecoming my sophomore year because it was outside and it was a lot of fun that way. And also my field hockey seasons all four years. And we did a really fun holiday show like two years ago that really stuck out to me. So that was fun, too.
Autumn, you were one of the hardest-working students I've worked with. Your work ethic is truly outstanding. You wanted to take your scripts and study your choreography and your blocking and your vocals outside of the school. At home, you're always prepared for each and every vocal rehearsal, blocking rehearsal, and I couldn't be more proud.
Outside of high school, I really enjoy hanging out with my family, my friends, and also my dog. Shout out to my dog Buddy. And I also like singing, and I am just starting to learn how to play the guitar.
I have this great picture of Autumn from last year where she's directing the fall play. She's got two different headsets on, so she's communicating with like four different camera people. She's got a video switcher in front of her, so she's doing that, and she's directing the show at the same time. And wow, like, it just amazes me how she can take chaos and just make it into something great. She does it all with a smile on her face.
My plans after high school would be to attend college, whether that's at community college or four-year, I'm still deciding. And I want to major in communications and minor in music.
Congratulations again, Autumn, on winning a Senior of the Month. I am super proud of you.
Autumn, again, once again, congratulations and everything. I'm so super proud of you and everything, and I know it's only October, but you have the whole rest of this year, your senior year, to do such amazing things. So congratulations.
So Autumn, I know we've spent the last couple of weeks talking about your future path and your colleges, and we're not quite sure yet, and that's okay. Whatever you choose is going to be great, and we're really hoping the best for you in your future.
Our next Senior of the Month to celebrate for October is Joseph Morales. Joseph, come on down. A round of applause for his family who's up there and attended. And now watch a short video on his accomplishments. Our next Senior of the Month is Joseph Morales. Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Joseph Morales, and I am October's Senior of the Month at Lacy Township High School.
Hi, Joseph, and congratulations on being named Senior of the Month.
Congratulations, Joe Morales, on winning Senior of the Month.
At Lacy Township High School, I participate in the Decking Club, NHS, the Fishing Club, and SGA. I'm also part of the basketball team and football team.
Even last year was a big growth period for you. During STEM three, you were the type of person who was kind of hesitant to work with people outside of your comfort zone, but you worked through it and persevered. Those are some of the best traits I actually like about you. And this year, seeing you as a senior, confident walking through the hallways in your own self and own abilities, that's really what I admire.
Some of my favorite memories during high school include winning the D-South Championship for basketball and playing central for football every year. It's one of my favorite memories. It's always so fun to play them.
One thing I do remember about last year, well, one funny thing is, I guess, I think I called you Michael for the first couple of weeks, but at least I got your name right today. But in all seriousness, what I do remember, and why I'm not at all surprised that you were named Student of the Month for the month of October, is how hard you worked. You know, I feel like mediocre was never enough for you. You always tried to do better. You sat with me, you talked to me, when you thought that, you know, that you could do better. And that just tells us everything about your character.
Outside of school, I like to hang out with my friends, fish, play sports, and volunteer my time to help organizations that I like.
You know, even when you were a freshman, I didn't look up to you. You were a lot taller than I am, but you've accomplished so many things over the last four years that really made me actually look up to you educationally. You're driven, hardworking, dedicated to making sure that you are the best version of yourself, and that's really what I like about you, and that's why you've been named Senior of the Month.
After high school, I plan on attending college and obtaining a degree in mathematics or statistics.
So I wish you great, you know, best of luck as you move through senior year, and I know that you're going to be successful in anything that you attempt to do. Again, congratulations on being named Student of the Month. It is well deserved.
So congratulations once again, Joe Morales, on winning Senior of the Month.
Thank you, Dr. Pereira. Concludes my presentation.
Okay, another round of, oh, we have some students leaving homework. Okay, so as I say every month, and this is the first month we're recognizing our staff Members of the Month, behind every successful student is an amazing teacher that helped them get there. So we have two Staff Members of the Month today, and we're going to start with James Brannick, who is a custodian at Lacy Township High School, nominated by Mr. Mermon. Come on down, Mr. Brannick. While he's making his way down, this is what Mr. Mermon had to say about Mr. Brannick. James is an extremely hard worker who cares deeply about his job. As the custodian, who is the first line of defense when it comes to maintenance of building systems, James has gone above and beyond to fix problems as they arise and provide maintenance to help prevent future problems. I check in with him often to find out how many miles he's put on each day. According to his smartwatch, he is all over the place. How many steps a day?
I do about eight miles.
Eight miles a day, wow. Last fall, he ran in all-new Ethernet ports in the gym so that WLTS could use robo-cams as part of their coverage. He helped trace and rewire the lecture hall sound system when we installed a new audio mixer, and he ran new audio lines in the press box to help enhance our graduation ceremony coverage. When we needed to hang a projector to provide backdrops for the spring musical, he was the first to come down and help. If you ask around the building, everyone has come in contact with James for some project or another, and we are super grateful. I know we have a video, but we're going to hold that for a moment. All right, okay. All right, our second Staff Member of the Month is Elizabeth Shepherd, who is a teacher at Lacy Township Middle School. Is Mrs. Shepherd here tonight? Could not make it? Okay. Well, let me tell you a little bit about Mrs. Shepherd because you're going to watch a video about her in a moment. She was nominated by Mrs. Kirk, her colleague, who had this to say about Mrs. Shepherd. During the past month, Mrs. Shepherd demonstrated incredible dedication to the students of During the past month, Mrs. Shepherd demonstrated incredible dedication to the students of Lacy Middle School by coordinating and hosting the most successful scholastic book fair to date. Beth personally rang up the sale for every single student, parent, and staff person who made a purchase during the evening for families and during the two in-school sale days. These sales put many hundreds of books into the hands of students for their reading pleasure, sparking their love of reading. Not only were students exposed to new high-interest books, but their classrooms directly benefited from the fair's proceeds by the addition of the books for teachers' classroom libraries along with the library as well. She's, Mrs. Shepherd is enthusiastic and committed in her approach to her work and her leadership has provided direction and motivation to her colleagues. So even though Beth couldn't be here with us tonight, congratulations, Mrs. Shepherd. Alright, and I believe we have a video, Mr. Leidl.
Alright, here we are at Lacy Township High School, getting ready to celebrate another staff member of the month. This month's staff member is James Brannick. Let's surprise him. Who's going to be first to congratulate you as being nominated as Staff Member of the Month?
I'm nominating Mr. Brannick as Staff Member of the Month here for Lacy Township School District because I'm pretty convinced that the high school would fall apart around us if not for some of the things that Mr. Brannick does every day. He's really an invaluable member of the staff. You can find him up on the roof working on the air conditioning units. You can find him up in the hallways putting up lighting fixtures. And really, I think I've used and abused his talents a lot over the last couple of years when it comes to rewiring all the audio in the lecture hall, setting things up in our press box, and the big projects we've done to get sound systems and things working in the auditorium and the gym. Mr. Brannick does it all with a smile. He really is just an amazing guy. And I'm so happy to have nominated him and that he wound up getting the Staff Member of the Month this month.
Good morning, everyone. We're here to recognize October's Staff Member of the Month, which is Mrs. Beth Shepherd. We're gonna come into our classroom right now. Hey, how's it going? Here to recognize you as the October's Staff Member of the Month.
Beth, congratulations on being chosen as a district staff person of the month. Very well deserved. Thank you so much for the hard work that you put into conducting our most successful scholastic book fair ever. And thank you so much for the leadership and enthusiasm that you're showing with helping out all of your ELA colleagues as we plow forward with the NJTSS. You're awesome. Thanks so much, Beth, and congratulations.
Alright, congratulations, Mr. Brannick and Mrs. Shepherd. So happy that you're part of our staff. Alright, Mr. Leidl, I believe we have another segment of the Lacy Now.
Very nice.
Thanks, Mr. Leidl, and thank you, Mr. Mermon, once again for putting our second Lacy Now of the Year together. Alright, I am now going to turn it over to Mr. Zalinski. Two presentations, Mr. Zalinski, the Department of Education's School Self-Assessment for HIB grades and our Student Achievement Report.
Are they both together?
Yes, one at a time.
Who else is gonna escape? Now's your chance. Seriously, now's your chance. Now's the one to escape. Please try right now. Oh, thanks, Tom. So, HIB grades is really easy while people are exiting. We self-assess ourselves for harassment, intimidation, and bullying. It is a report card that we give ourselves each year. We report that out to the state. You're typically looking for a passing score. Don't ask me why, but the state, 100%, is a 78. I'm pleased to announce that all of our schools scored between a 73 and a 76. It is a self-assessment. I am appreciative that our principals, who did the scoring, do ding themselves here and there, places that we can do better. Typically, it's meet more times a year to discuss building changes or building improvements. Or it's just speed of doing things. That usually gives us a few points off. We will post those grades as required on our website. This is our annual reporting of that. The next thing is our annual October, sometimes November, depending on COVID or not, report on student achievement. This is a compliance document, but it's a lot more than that for us. Every year, we will do this. We are measured. The only requirement that we have is our NJSLA scores, but I am gonna present our NWDA scores and I'll explain each of them as we go along. And we'll talk about them. All of this, again, will be posted. The cautionary tale, or maybe the educational tale that I'll give you on standardized testing scores, is that it's a yardstick that doesn't always measure everybody equally. It is a challenge. Standardized testing in any state, especially New Jersey, that is very demanding, has some ups and downs as Lacy always has and we continue to have a report on that. I'm always available for commentary. All of our buildings share these to the point where our teachers work on test scores at the granular level. They're gonna look at every individual student. I will not show them here because obviously I do so. And we'll talk about our annual test scores. And there are requirements here of what I'm gonna share with you. Some of them will move very quickly. If you have specific questions anywhere along the way, all of our district supervisors, supervisors, and curriculum people would be very happy to talk about these things at nauseam because we do a lot of things trying to work on student achievement, which is the presentation. So, we present our local assessments. This is in addition to the state testing, which we'll get to towards the tail end of this presentation. Different things that we've done, different things that we've purchased, different things that we, ways that we assess our students over the course of 180 days. Okay, assessment at the best is daily within a teacher classroom and we work our way up from there, whether it's benchmarks, diagnostic assessments, computer modules because we have a one-to-one program, or standardized report cards, which if you have, if there's an elementary parent in the room, K to 5 at this point, you see that the report card looks a lot different than it did when you went to school many years ago, probably. We use, we contract with the Northwest Education Association and we administer a MAP test, a state low-stakes test that we control. It's not reported out to the state. And we administer it three times a year, grades K to 10 in ELA and MAP. It gives our teachers an instant assessment of their students, a benchmark assessment. It is across all grades, across all disciplines, and across all dailies, all skill levels, because it's an adaptive test. If you're answering all the questions very quickly, it's gonna give you harder questions and it's gonna give you a chance to show that you have mastery or that you are gifted. It'll also show those students who are struggling and what we need to do with them. And we share these results out with our parents each time that we administer it. It's pretty simple and I'll move quickly because I will post these, okay? We give it in the, the ones I'm showing you are fall and spring. We give a winner one. I don't show you there because even the NWA says use that as a guide. You don't really report out on that. You wanna see where your kids are. The real achievement is fall to spring. And all NWA tests are measured against a national norm. So it takes all students, and I forget the exact number. I believe the last time I looked at it, it was over a million students in the United States to take it. And it norms them every five years to say this, for four or five years, this is a normative level of that test, which here is indicated in black. So typically, you're gonna want our light blue or our orange, my color's maybe off for all colorblind, to be at least at the black or higher. If it's not, we say from the district level that we've got to do something different or better. Okay, so you'll see that here from kindergarten to grade two in reading. You'll see it in math. We're pleased when we see that the orange or the blue is above the black, the black being the national norm, whether it's in the spring or it's in the fall. Okay, and you'll see that really what we're looking for here, we'd be looking for a significant decline of us being below the black. You're not gonna see that in any of these slides. And you'll see the scale on the left. And you'll see that we either, we tend to outperform the national norm or we're very close. Something like this is a good example of something that will have our attention. It does have our attention. Grade 5, 6 reading. Grade 5, 6 math. Grade 5 being a little lower than grade 6 as compared to the national norm. This is grade 7, 8 reading. Same thing in grade 8. That would have some of our attention. Grade 8 math. Again, would be lower than the national norm. And then move on to the state testing. State testing in New Jersey. Student learning assessments at NJSLA. We also promote New Jersey Student Learning Standards. New Jersey likes that acronym and they use it quite often. So I'm gonna present those results and I'll show you how I did it. Every year, I do it a little different. You know, it's a compliance document, but I'd like it to be simple enough to be informative for those who are interested. Not a lot of people stuck around. Maybe they didn't know I was talking tonight and they would've stayed. Okay? Grades 3 and 4. So I'm gonna give you, in all of these slides, I'm gonna give you the state average, the district average, and how we did compared to last year. Because you've got two different things going on here. I'm not giving you the same kids. That would be a different report that I'm not required to do. It'd be a lot longer and a lot more involved. Parents get that by looking at results from last year, their child, to this year, their child. What I'm giving you is how the grade did last year and then how the grade did this year. But remember, always keep in mind, it's a different group of kids each year, a different group of students each year. Okay, and I give you the Blueberry example, a lot of things, but that's not really for here. So, grade 3, grade 4, okay, you'll see how we did compared to the state. So, on grade 3, the state outpaced us by almost a percentage point. Grade 4, we outpaced the state average by almost four points. Okay, by my calculations, and I'm not really the expert, each percentage point is about 20 kids, 20 to 25 students to give you like that measure, that scale, approximately. And I make you off, Tim's not here, Dr. Dad's not here. He's like the numbers guy. So maybe I'm the next to be the kind of reporter that sees the difference. We talked about the little asterisk there that we outpaced the New Jersey growth last year, which means that New Jersey growth grew slower. We grew better. Again, I have a couple of notations in there as we go along. Okay, so close, it's like a close to a cigar in grade 3 if you consider us to be at the state average. And then grade 4, we outpaced the state and even outpaced ourselves, okay, on this given year. We also are required to report out subgroups, any subgroup that has 10 or more members in it. So these are the subgroups that we are, we report out on. They have more than 10 members, than 10 students in them by grade. And we show you their performance. The state's accountability here is for districts to make sure that they're not ignoring that subgroups typically perform less than your general population. So the general population of Lacy is here, but our subgroups are here. Okay, in some cases, not. Usually, the subgroup will outperform the general population. Very interesting to us at times. Did they get extra help? Did that teacher do a better job because it's a smaller group of kids? That also has our attention as we look at them. For the most part, they'll underperform. In this case, over, outperforming the general group are Hispanic grade 4 and two or more races in both grades, almost at least equally performed or outperformed. Okay, it's interesting to us. It also deserves our attention because we wanna see what we did right or what we're not doing as good. And you, I don't have to go into why subgroups may or may not be better than the general population.
Mr. Zalinski.
And you'll see that here.
Can I ask you a question on that? Do we know the numbers that we're looking at here with these subgroups over last year, were we up or down? Like you did on the previous slide?
I didn't note them here. It's a good measure to look at, but because our subgroups are generally very small, except when you get to economically disadvantaged, about 20% of our population, we look at them very individually. So, hey, you did great. So what we also do, remember, if a teacher had a third grade class last year and now is a third grade class this year, we heavily stress to our teachers to go back in our system to see how they did each kid last year and then we start those conversations. How come this kid did so good or how come this kid did perform very well? But I don't, I don't have the ups and downs here, no. But I can certainly, I can probably think that up and share that with you if you really want.
If you can, could you tell me off the top of your head, are we, are we?
I can't off the top of my head now.
Are we, no, not the year-over-year number, but did we improve?
I don't know, off the top of my head, the subgroups, no.
Okay.
I'd have to go with Gafford, I'm sorry. Yeah. But that'll be next year's presentation, but I'll give you those numbers when I can put it together for you. Math, grade 3, grade 4. We outperformed the state in both areas. Has our attention a little bit that we dropped in grade 3. We improved in grade 4. And remember, the up and down is our own. How we're doing personally and then, of course, getting the state. So we outperformed the state in both grades, in grades 3 and 4. And again, the subgroups, which really to look at the subgroups, remember, you wanna go back here. Grade 3, we were approximately 50% in grade 3. Here, Hispanic students were over 50%, but IEP, economically disadvantaged, two or more races, did not as well. Now, keep in mind too, our, again, I already said it, our subgroups of economic disadvantage and IEPs are very small numbers of students in Lacy. Growing, but small. Grades 5 and 6. We underperformed the state in ELA. We have an improvement in grade 5. Remember, we're gonna very closely watch grade 5 and 6. We have completely flipped that paradigm by grade 5 being in one of the, grades, one of the 5 buildings, being with the same teacher for the entire 180 days for all subject, air for all four subject areas. Grade 6, the flip is that they will only be with a specialist in that area. So that's, that's a big flip that we have to pay attention to when we're looking at scores that aren't, in the previous year, that aren't where we want them to be. Certainly, this is not where we want them to be. Okay, remember, grade 5, 6 building has been dismantled and we spread those kids out a little bit differently, hoping that the new paradigm is the right call and the right choice. Just met with a kid, the fifth grade supervisor the other day, and they believe that it is making a difference immediately. Again, our subgroups, if you see there's no subgroup, it means we have less than 10 in that group. This is math, grade 5, 6. We have some improvement. We have much more improvement to do. Subgroups.
Can I ask another question? Sorry, before you move on. Have we been able to identify why in grades 3 we're down 4.7, 4.8? In grade 6, we're down 7.0 and 0.1? Do we attribute the grade 6 transition into the new middle school, maybe? Is that one of the reasons we're identifying?
No, remember, they just, that's this year. This is, this is last year's test.
So was there any reason why our third grade is underperforming at a rate of 4.7 and 4.8 and our sixth? And our sixth grade is underperforming at a rate of 7.0 and 0.1?
Can I give you a specific reason? No, okay, but because remember too, now these students have moved on when we're looking at this. So we're going back to the third grade teachers, for example, going, you didn't meet this, call it the state average last year. What happened here? So then what we do is we take these tests, we look at every single evidence indicator. So every single teacher, I can see that in this standard and this question, did they perform above or below the state average? So that's the conversation that we go back to. Can I quote to them specifically right now? No, okay, but that's the conversation that we have right from PD Day in September, where teachers are given their scores, given access to their scores. And like, I'll make it up a little bit, I'll do social studies, which is not tested. So in social studies, they discover that my kids that I had last year didn't know anything about the presidents of the United States. So they'll go to me, I'll go, oh my God, I missed that chapter. Or yeah, I tend to ignore that because they should know that on their own. Hey, that's not getting it done, we've got to do different. It's much more, it's much more how you're teaching, I'm being very simplistic.
All right, that's fine.
And that's what we do. That's the conversation that's required, that's the conversation that we always have. I'll put in this a little bit too, as we go a little deeper into this. It's not important to note, and it's not part of my presentation because the state of New Jersey does not recognize this. I have also looked at schools that are like us, special education numbers, economically disadvantaged numbers, the old, what the state used to call district factor groups. So socioeconomically, how are we doing compared to the rest of the state? We are better or equal to the rest of the state socioeconomically. It's not an excuse, but it gives me some pause to say that our population is okay, but we're always striving for more. I can look, I'm not going to look at my numbers, I know they're looking at me going, we have to do better. So we know that, it's a slow grind. It's just very slow. I'm hoping five, sixth grade, the change there is going to make a big difference. We have interventions that are here, which I don't even have to go into. We've been doing a lot of these for years. We're changing some of these. Our data coaches have fanned out. We've got more data coaches that we funded through titles. So they're having robust conversations there. We're adopting a New Jersey-tiered systems of supports where students are getting the help in their class without having to go outside of their class. Makes a big difference. That's just, those conversations have just occurred because we've got to keep moving with this. You can't fall behind. Science is the worst, wait till we get to the science slide.
I don't pretend to be an educator, but we talk about this a lot. Mrs. Claus brings it up a lot and you know, there's a lot of validity to it. If we just simply go back to teaching the students the old school way, instead of teaching the students to pass a test, wouldn't that make them more well-rounded and being able to increase their numbers incrementally year over year? If we make them more well-rounded student versus making them ready to perform in a test? Now, moving forward as a father of three kids who graduated from here, they do very, they do very well in the real world, thank God.
Good to hear.
Right? However, when we're talking about rankings and so on and so forth, if we just went old school and taught them, you know, this is how it is, this is the curriculum, we're going to follow, as opposed to this is what you need to know on a test. Do you think, and I'm just asking our educators here, do you think that that would play a big role in us performing perhaps better on the test?
So a couple of things. Number one, we don't do that. Like there's not a single, and if they think that's the case, we have to correct them. None of our teachers teach to a test, never happened. I've been here 20 years, never has that been in anybody's vocabulary, okay? However, it is a measuring stick that will come up to them certainly along the way. The problem with the philosophy of, and I am a 30-year veteran's teacher, I taught old school. So I understand exactly what you're saying. The problem is, is that, is that like the needle has moved. These tests and the requirements of what colleges expect and society expects, everybody is moving to places where we don't even get it. So what the teachers are doing, what they're really trying to do is that I've got like that old school mindset maybe, but I've got this classroom full of 24 to 30 kids who are all over the place. So they got to figure out how to differentiate to the top, to the bottom, to everybody in between. Because we know that if I did the old school, you get AP, you get honors, you get college prep, you get non-college prep, you get the lowest of the low, all these five areas. And study after study after study, if I don't teach to the heart, make everybody come with me. It's not going to work, but it creates a lot of challenge. I can't just be old school anymore. I can't just be, go home, read your chapter in social studies and we're going to test on it tomorrow and I'll give you a lecture. We have teachers that, not we, but there's teachers who will lecture to second graders for 30 minutes. It can't be. And that's how we kind of learn. We would sit there, me and you maybe, I think I'm us, or you. So we would sit there, you know, begging for that instruction, begging for extra help. I mean, actually begging for extra work, remember, begging for extra work, give me more work. You know, I'll do more, you know, but that's not the case anymore. Testing is giving us a measure of what's going on. I just can't, I can't anytime, and I talk to all my colleagues in Ocean County, because that's my group, my group is Ocean County, I don't have really outside of that. I can't, too big of a state and so on. I talked to my colleagues, they're struggling with the same stuff. I don't ever say COVID hangover anymore because I say we've got to move beyond that. Our COVID kids that were impacted the worst are freshmen right now. They were fifth grade in the shutdown. They're the most impacted of what we've got right now, the COVID kids are at the high school. Where we're hoping that the middle school kids, we were able to straighten them out because they were younger and COVID didn't impact them as much. And again, we just have to keep working on these results to drive instruction, but not driving off the rails where I'm teaching to a test every day, no way. It'll never work, it'll never work.
Thank you. I'm sorry I dragged this on.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
How do we have 75 teachers trained in Oregon Gillingham, which is a reading in ELA program? Do we even have 75 ELA grade teachers in the entire district?
No, what we're doing is we're training, which we're, and Oregon Gillingham is a good example of that. What we've also discovered, especially at the elementary grades, is that our teachers, the regular classroom teacher needs to be in interventions. We can't be pulling kids out and giving them these interventions because everybody's benefiting from those interventions. So we're training everybody in something like Oregon Gillingham. So that when they need an intervention in class, because they've got their kids grouped by disabilities, these kids might be in Oregon Gillingham, the above kids might be given a new book or a second book. And that's how we're operating to make sure that our teachers understand the interventions. Because in most states, the case manager is the classroom teacher, not these fancy high-paid case managers. The classroom teacher makes the interventions, right? And we're really moving in that direction. The state's requiring us to move in that direction as the answer required. And we've been on this process for a couple of years.
So they're trained, but they're not certified?
No certified, I believe they're, I believe they're certified Oregon Gillingham, they have this.
75?
Yeah, Michelle's not here, but I'm sure she's famous.
Is it supposed to be $2,000 to trade each, to certify these teachers?
Yeah, we mostly use federal funds.
Is that anywhere in the budget?
It's mostly federal fund. Okay, we said no, most of them is Amazon's is awesome, right? In most cases, okay, I believe that we're using federal dollars.
What you're saying is reading is great.
It's great, right? Good stuff, and all of our teachers know that intervention, okay? Which is great, highlight for the slide, thank you. Right, it's a good highlight for that slide. Grade seven, eight. Grade eight's a good example, and I did put a little note in here. As a good example, maybe to some of what we're talking about, so we sat down with grade eight. Grade eight's grouped last year, which is now grade nine, no, grade 10. Two years ago, they did awful. Like their test scores, they did awful, their test scores were awful. It's the only word I can use. Sat down, real concerted effort, this is the bounce back.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, right, for sure, for sure. So the reaction to test, state testing is this what we did, right? Now, I'm really waiting and I get it usually a couple of months from now. I'm really waiting to see how we did against the rest of Ocean County. Because Esri Park Press or NJ.com always does it for me. So they'll always rank me with the rest of Ocean County. Because we all talk, we all talk about our interventions, we all want to see how we're doing. We all live right here in this little county, you know? So I'm really waiting on that and I get that once a year as well. Subgroups again. ELA did well in a lot of areas, IEP students especially, very good there, not so good in grade seven. Some highlights for grade seven and A, we continued outperforming grade seven. Our Hispanic students grew by 9.2%, it's a big number. We meet the New Jersey average. In the eighth grade, we grew by 8.9% in the Hispanic students, IEP students grew by 12.7%. So that's my like, that's like my example this year of how eighth grade can turn it around. And we're going to try to apply those strategies to seventh grade and certainly sixth grade, okay? As an example. Math, grades seven and eight. Big improvement by us, but we're still short of the state in math. We very much outpaced the state in both grades as far as improvement, but we have not reached the state average, we're much better than we were. But she's not here, I'll quote Michelle again, Samus again. She says, what's wrong with a state test where 17% of the state can pass? That's her quote, not mine. So it's just interesting food for thought there.
She's not wrong.
She's not, well, she might not be wrong. I'd never, never call her wrong, she'll kill us all, all right? Again, the subgroups. You laugh, right? Jason, like it's true. Our interventions, looking at digital items, data coaching, lesson planning, creating rigorous instruction, you know, because Oregon has one piece, but we also have, we also look at our test results. We really feel that our kids who are exceeding are not enough. Not enough of our kids are exceeding the norm. Right, we have to work on that.
I'm sorry, I have to ask. With the increase of the Spanish population, that number's quite significant. Are we finding that those Spanish students are Spanish-speaking first and English is the second language? Or we find in a mix, is it a good balance of they can speak English, they can't speak English?
The ELL population, which is now MLL, the multilingual learners, the multilingual population of Lacey Township, the entire district is about 60. So when you become a multilingual learner, you don't have English skills. So I think I missed your question.
I think your answer to my question.
Yeah. Like none, they'll come in with no English skills or very broken English skills and they're typically better than their parents. So we have, it's a real hard process to get them to where we need to get them. And when we exit them from multilingual learning classes, they still struggle. Okay, we're doing, I think we're doing a good job in some of these slides, but it's still, it's still a decent struggle. You talk about, I think Manchester's a good example, Townsville's a good example. Their numbers have exploded where they've had to hire multiple teachers. We had R1 in the last two years. Our numbers are a little plateaued, but we're kind of expecting more.
Are we hiring ESL teachers?
We have to, when we run out of capacity, we have to. We didn't this year, we didn't have to this year. We spread them out, they do multi schools, we have three of them in district and they do multiple schools.
And they get this, they get the same learning as everyone else in the school or is it more?
So what we do with our multilingual learners.
More emphasis on English.
We make sure they don't miss, for example, they don't miss their four core subjects, okay? And in some cases, if it's really, they have no English skills, the multilingual learner will push in or pull them out when they have to because they are so low on the English skill side and they work with them. We don't do a bilingual program because we have so few of them, all right? But we do, we do the high intensity program. We're high intensity, trying to get them English skills, trying to get them there to really, in some cases, they will take their exams in Spanish, okay? But the goal is not to.
Right, okay, thank you.
Subgroups again. Algebra one, this is all of algebra one, middle school and high school. This slide, I'll just pause for one moment. It's only ninth grade students, there aren't many of them. So we get big swings in what goes on here. Geometry has our attention, yeah, geometry's not good, we did not have that last year. Algebra two is better. It's a drop, but at least we're hitting the state average. So these are very small numbers of students, it's typically about 11 and tops out about 19 students in each area. So we see some big swings here, but we are recording, reporting out on it. More on the interventions, which I will post this tomorrow or Monday, I'll have this up. Science, we're doing a little better, but still not great. I have to ask the rest of the county. Grade 11, we look like we're top dogs in grade 11 by actually getting close to the state average. Grade eight, everybody's complaining. It's the earth standards that we don't incorporate, we discovered that, we're working on that. And grade five, we have such a concentration in ELA and math, I believe our science is suffering. So we are not doing well there. The reconfiguration, we're working on it. But I need some more time, which I don't have in our schedules for science. Our STEM kids do great, but general science, not as good. Here's the interventions that we're working on. SAT was good. I've been doing SATs in Lacey Township for 20, 21 years. Beating the national mean is great, we even beat the state mean in math. So these are, these are, these are good results for Lacey, in my opinion. Been doing this a long time, that's pretty good for us. These are seniors only, class of 2023, so juniors are not counted here, they'll be counted next year. Vents placement, huge pats on the back to our AP teachers, all right? We upped our numbers of kids taking AP. This should bode well for rankings at some point or some stage of the game. We had over 31 more students who passed the test with a three plus. Okay, 101 just didn't get a three, they probably got between a three and a five, they did get between a three and a five. Okay, we added all those kids and we did not drop, we dropped a percentage and a half point with total number. With scores three plus, I think that's a good, it's a very good result. Statistically, that's a very good result. Graduation rate were high, I think we were 95% in June, which is very good. We work hard on that, we work hard to make sure we don't lose any kids. And remember, you could lose a kid from ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade or 12th grade and they count against you. So that starts from the minute they enter our high school. Making sure we hang on to kids, because they, in New Jersey, just for note, at 16 parent permission, you can sign out. So we work real hard not to make sure that doesn't happen. Because these are small numbers, because we're not a big high school. Okay, we're medium size, so anyone who drops out hurts this average we did good last year, 95%. Post-grad plans, I'm always looking to make sure that our college numbers don't dip. Okay, the others, I can't always explain, what's interesting here is workforce. People going out and working last year went up, up a couple of percentage points. Military comes up and down. Trade and technical way down. Could have been that cohort of kids, could have been that they decided to go get their associate's degree. Because you see, those numbers are up, so they move around this chart. But I'm always very, very interested. If, I don't have the older years in here, but I always remember the years that our four-year colleges was 30%. You know, 25%. So I always make that note there on post-grad plans. And I always pat ourselves on the back, but our college academy, that's good stuff. Okay, we have lots of kids who earn their degrees. Things that we do in the summers, our STEM classes, we're building a STEM room. Thank you, I'll post this.
Before Mr. Bond begins, I just want to reiterate, I want to thank Mr. Zalinski for his presentation. It will be posted on our website tomorrow. And tonight, we are, we're approving our district and board goals, many of which apply to the presentation that Mr. Zalinski just presented. Our last presentation of the night, Mr. Bond is here. At our last administrators' meeting, we had a long conversation about our 18 to 21-year-old transition program that has been going through an overhaul for quite some time. And I truly believe that we've reached a pinnacle. We're doing outstanding things in that program. And I asked Mr. Bond to join us tonight to just share a few slides with us and talk a little bit about the things that we have done and why the program is so amazing and going so well. So I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. I'll be brief, but try and be concise. So what we're talking about is our 18 to 21 transition program at Lacey Township High School. And it's a program for 18 to 21-year-old students with disabilities that prepares them for their transition to adulthood. They finish their four years of high school and now they get an additional up to three years based on their individual situation to provide them skills to transition into the workforce or whatever their post-secondary plans are going to be. Here's Mr. Layla. Oh, am I doing it? There we go, all right. So I thought it's important, as Dr. Pereira mentioned. So I, I thought it's important, as, as Dr. Pereira mentioned, this has been a few years in the making. Um, so i- it's important to look at where we were historically to where we are now, and where we've come over the last two to three years. So historically, we didn't have this program at the high school. We had two self-contained classrooms, and when students would come to the high school and enter into either of those classrooms based on their specific disability, they would stay in that classroom until they aged out at twenty-one. Because they could potentially spend up to seven years in the same classroom at the high school, we would at times hold them back, say, one year at the elementary school level, one year at Mill Pond, one year at the middle school. So they weren't necessarily moving up with their grade-level peers. Um, and, you know, then they would get there and they would spend one year in the same, uh, in the same classroom for multiple years until they hit age twenty-one. So what we decided and, and what we noticed as, uh, we were looking at our numbers and projecting for the next year, was that we needed this extra program. We needed an eighteen to twenty-one program outside of those two self-contained classrooms. Um, we wanted those students to be able to move up with their grade-level peers and get to high school as a freshman and do their typical four years, uh, with their grade-level peers. Freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, they hit that senior year, they do all their senior activities, they go to prom, um, they walk at graduation, and then they move into our eighteen to twenty-one program. They've finished all of their high school requirements, now it's time to start preparing for life after high school. So, we kind of put our heads together and figured out, you know, what is, what do we need for this to be successful? What does this look like? And, uh, myself, along with child study team and our teachers, developed a proposal that we put together to build the structure to what this was going to be. Those included, first and foremost, we needed a teacher. Uh, we also needed a case manager, and I was very specific on that case manager needed to be dedicated to the self-contained programs. I didn't want them case-managing anything outside of those programs, because the, the, the lift is a lot heavier, um, with everything else that comes with it. Uh, Mr. Fister, who's an adapted phys ed teacher at the high school, he also holds a Teacher of Students with Disabilities certification. Uh, we redefined his role a little bit into more of a job skills teacher as well. Uh, he still has adaptive PE, uh, roles. Um, we created a dedicated life skills room, which I'll, I'll explain and show you pictures in a couple of slides, but we renovated a space in the high school, that this is where this program, that's their classroom. And it has a full kitchen, full, uh, laundry facilities, it has a leisure space, basically all the spaces that they need to start developing the skills that they'll need when they leave high school and go into adulthood. Um, so that teacher is Mrs. Bannon, who's here tonight. Uh, the case manager became Mrs. Mandys, uh, who has quickly assimilated herself into the district as a whole. Um, and Mr. Fister, and that's kind of with myself, that's the four of us, that, that's the team that put this together. So the four of us went through a professional development series through the Bog Center for Developmental Disabilities at Rutgers University. Uh, it was pretty intensive, it was ongoing, there was a lot that went into it. It got us to create some forward-thinking plans as to what we wanted this to look like. Uh, Mrs. Bannon and Mr. Fister both became what's called work-based learning certified through Rutgers. Uh, it's a certification that allows us to place our students out in work, work, um, placements throughout the community, and it talks about things like OSHA standards, child labor laws, overtime laws, nothing to do with education, it has to do with work. Um, and then the last piece was Mr. Fister and Mrs. Bannon wrote the curriculum one summer, um, after we figured out what the structure was going to look like as to how we were going to, uh, move forward. So the, the basis of this program, the curriculum, is what's called community-based instruction, acronym CBI. So it's sustained and repeated instruction that takes place in the community rather than in the school building. The key pieces there are that it's sustained and repeated. These aren't field trips, we don't just take a ride to ShopRite and walk around and, and pick some items off the shelf and, and pay for them. These are things that are happening every week, there's goals and objectives behind them, there's skills we're developing, and what happens is we take the in-school experiences and we transfer them into the community through community living experiences and career exploration. Um, you know, some of our students with disabilities have a difficult time through misconceptions by employers or community members as to what their capabilities are, that they have a hard time transferring those skills that they learned in school into the community. So we bring them into the community, we, you know, introduce them to our community members, they get acquainted, and they see what they're actually capable of doing, and they develop those life skills, um, to, to carry them into adulthood when they eventually leave us at age twenty-one. So what does that look like? There's the community living side of it, there's the career exploration side of it. So community living, using public transportation, eating at restaurants, libraries, shopping, food shopping, uh, using the bank, and then the other one is participating in recreational and leisure activities. So when we take our students to the golfing range and Mr. Fister's teaching them how to golf, it's not just a field trip to have fun, it's te- giving them a skill that when they leave, they have something to do other than sitting in their home and, and watching TV or, or being on, on their device. Um, we've gone to Berkeley Island Park and done crabbing and fishing with the help of Mr. Merman and, and Mr. Fister, who are avid fishermen. Um, again, giving them lifelong skills of, of leisure activities, what can I do in my free time? Uh, the career exploration piece of it, there's hands-off, hands-on, getting an idea of what our interests are, uh, what do we like to do, what are we capable of doing, and then actually getting out into different organizations, volunteering, uh, working within the community to develop, uh, an interest profile that can eventually move into something that, uh, could be a full-time employment, um, after we leave, uh, school. So talking about career development, three stages, career awareness, which we cover through our community-based instruction piece, learning about careers, understanding what's out there, what pertains, what are we capable of being involved in. And then through the work-based learning piece, WBL, career exploration, we're actually getting our kids out into the community, and they're working with our community partners, which I'll show you in the next slide. Uh, we're super excited to be partnering with a lot of people in our community, and, you know, surprisingly enough, the, or not surprisingly enough, the mom and pop shops are, you know, small business owners, they're the ones that want to work with us. The large corporations are a little more difficult to deal with. Um, so we've had great success and, and we're always looking to expand our reach as well. And then finally, this leads into career preparation, which is our vocational programs, whether it's our high school vocational program through OCVTS or adult vocational programs, but we're building a vocational profile for these students that takes their career interests along with what support needs they have, and meshing it together to say, okay, what is an actual competitive employment position that they can seek when they leave here? And that's, that's the goal, for them to leave here with an idea of where can I go and find a job that's going to, you know, pay me money? And through Mrs. Bannon and Mr. Fister's work, we've already had students get offered jobs, um, when, when they do leave here based off of some of the placements that we've had. So that's, that's the ultimate success marker there. So these are our community partnerships so far. Um, I do have to say, Captain Zin has been with us since the start. They have been phenomenal, can't say enough about Chef Bob and his crew. I've gone over there and I've, I've worked with them and I've seen them in action. Uh, they've taken our kids in from day one of this program, and we go weekly, and our students are in the back doing anything from folding napkins to stocking shelves to wrapping scallops and bacon. Uh, it's, it's pretty incredible, and they have been, you know, there was a little bit of a pause once COVID hit, but once the restrictions were lifted, they welcomed us right back, so I can't say enough about them. But the list is there, Ryan's Automotive, Lavender Blue, German Butchers are a fairly new one, uh, we're in the Food Bank, the library, Gladiator Gym's a new one as well, and, uh, Shipwreck Games, I think, starts this week, or...
November.
November. Um, is, uh, we, we started with YMCA, we moved to Gladiator Gym, but they've been with us, um, as well. And, you know, things like Gladiator Gym and YMCA, we're also looking at age-appropriate physical education. There's still the phys ed requirement that exists, but we want it to be age-appropriate, something that, again, they can take with them. Uh, we're working on establishing a partnership with Retro Fitness in, in town now, too, um, again, through Mrs. Bannon's efforts. Uh, and the last one there, Women's Club of Lacey, can't say enough about their support of all of our special education programs, they make yearly donations to our program. Uh, at the time that we finished renovating the life skills room, the Women's Club donated fifteen hundred dollars to us to, uh, furnish the place. So we used that fifteen hundred dollars to buy bakeware, cookware, silverware, uh, small appliances, air fryers, microwaves. So we use that money to basically, you know, we had an empty kitchen, and we use that money to, to stock the cabinets. Um, and, uh, they've continued to make donations to our programs all along. So here's some pictures of our facilities as well, I'll show you some of the kids in action. So this is the life skills room. Top left, you have your kitchen, uh, all the necessary, um, you know, appliances and, and things that you need, uh, to fully run a kitchen, there's laundry facilities. Top right is adjacent, there's a door that leads right out to a courtyard, it is an outdoor space, we're, we're working on developing now, uh, we've had some help through an Eagle Scout project. Uh, bottom right, that, that's the leisure activities, there's a couch, there's a TV, there's video games. Again, things like, okay, you're at work, you have a half-hour lunch break, what do you do? Right? So that, those are the skills, it may seem like we're sitting on a couch playing video games, but we're actually developing kind of, you know, what, how do we occupy our time for, for fifteen, twenty minutes? Um, so it's a great space, Mrs. Bannon and Mr. Fister have done an excellent job, um, you know, really turning that into a learning environment that's conducive to this type of program. So community-based instruction, uh, top left, we're at the Food Bank, top right Gladiator Gym, bottom right Berkeley Island Park, crabbing and fishing. Uh, one of the coolest experience so far that I've been a part of, I did accompany them, bottom left, our transportation took us up to the Point Beach train station, and we bought tickets, we looked at the train schedules, we rode NJ Transit up to Long Branch, transportation scooped us up there, went to the Monmouth Mall, did some more, um, you know, CBI-type activities, and then came back. Great experience, um, you know, and what you don't see is, you know, we're all on the train, everyone looks happy, the amount of practice that went into this in Mrs. Bannon's classroom, and I saw that as well, I was involved in that, and that was a great sight, to, a mock train, how do we board the train, how do we mine the gap? Right? Uh, watching YouTube videos on how to navigate the NJ Transit kiosk. Um, so these were the things that happened in the classroom, and then we transfer them into the community. Um, so, and I credit Mrs. Bannon again for coming up with these out-of-the-box ideas on how we can provide these real-life experiences for our students. And we will be, uh, again, embarking on another, uh, train trip this year. Uh, work-based learning, you can see some, uh, Captain Zin pictures on the right, uh, one of our students, um, Ed, with his Ryan Service Center sweatshirt, super excited to be working there. Uh, in the middle, we have Greg, uh, cooking up in the life skills room, and you can see the menu on the bottom. One of the great things they do is on Fridays, they turn our life skills room into the Lion Cafe, and our staff members at the high school can sign up to come eat lunch there. And our students basically turn it into a restaurant, and they seat our staff members, they serve them, they clean up, as if they were running a full restaurant. And it's great, again, to develop those skills in the classroom that they can transfer into the community, but it also gets our staff members into the classroom and interacting with those students. And we've had a, a great turnout, and it's, it's jam-packed every, every Friday. I think tomorrow is, is another one, right? What do we serve?
No, tomorrow, next Friday, we do, uh, grilled cheese again.
Grilled cheese, okay. Grilled cheese and tomato soup is a fan favorite. Um, and, and Chef Greg is, is always, uh, cooking up there, and, and, I mean, even to the point of, we put dividers up between the kitchen part and the table part, front of the house, back of the house, they really make it into, um, a, a relevant type, uh, So that, that kind of sums up what the program is. What sparked this conversation, and I do need to give all the credit to Mrs. Bannon and Mr. Fister, is that I recently took a, a trip out to the Department of Education in Trenton, they had a community of practice for eighteen to twenty-one programs. And districts from all over the area, Monmouth, Ocean, Mercer, Middlesex, Burlington, anyone that signed up came, and we basically just sit around and have a conversation. What are you doing, what are you doing, what works, what are the challenges? And as I'm listening to these other districts, and all of the different resources that they have at their disposal, you know, a director, a supervisor directly related to the program, a transition coordinator, multiple teachers, job coaches, and I kind of talk about what we're doing, and it's like, we're, between two teachers and myself, we've developed, and more so the teachers and me, we've developed, uh, an exemplar program, we're doing just as good, if not better, than some of these other districts that have layers and layers of support. So, super proud of what we've put together, it's a great service that we're providing our kids, and, you know, looking forward to continuing to expand the program, yeah.
It's a great program. How many, um, uh, young adults do you have in the program?
Nine.
Nine.
Next job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bannon, and I know Mr. Fister's not here, but thank you to him, and thank you, of course, to Mr. Bond, and for doing that presentation, uh, and just showcasing some of the great things that we're doing. I've done enough talking and presenting, so that concludes my comments, uh, for tonight. Thank you, Mrs. Downing.
All right. And thank you to everyone who presented, we appreciate it. At this time, we'll go to public comment. I need to get that page. An audience member wishing to make a comment will raise his or her hand, and when called upon, state their name, address, or affiliation and intention to make a statement. Comments will be addressed to the board president, comments will be made one issue at a time, comments will be limited to five minutes. No audience member shall be recognized twice until all who have wished to comment have been recognized. Excuse me. This portion of the meeting is for public comments only, and there will be no questions answered. The purpose of this board meeting is to perform our business in public, everyone is entitled to a public comment. If there is a question for the board, there is an established chain of command to follow. At that point, with that being said, public comment. Is there anyone that has a public comment that would like to come up?
Long walk, right?
Dee Behujan, Forkett River, I'm also the co-chair of the Lacey Special Education Parent Advisory Group, a parent and a taxpayer. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to Mr. Bond, Mrs. Bannon, and Mr. Fister for all their work on the CL program. Just imagine if we could grow that and, uh, have students from other districts come in, how much income that you could bring into the school. I also wanted to congratulate you on your ROD grant and your preschool grant. I see when you really want something, how hard you can work for it. You brought in four hundred fifty thousand dollars so that you can get a wrestling room, a preschool program, and I just hope that you're going to work that hard to keep the paraprofessionals. We have less than thirty-five contracted paraprofessionals. They are very important to our students with special needs, they need consistent paraprofessionals, not part-time, not two or three a day, not a few a month. Students have medical needs, they need someone that knows them and that's consistent. I just hope that this spring, that my son's paraprofessional and all the other paraprofessionals are not going to get pink slips again. So, think about that, and think about how work, how hard you worked on everything else, and I hope that you're going to work that hard for the students in this district that are most vulnerable and need your help. Thank you.
Thanks, Dee. Are there any other comments?
Hello, Gavin Rozi, Forkett River, New Jersey. I just want to start off by addressing some of the stuff from last meeting, you know, some board members felt that it was appropriate to, to delve into personal attacks and personal stuff. That's unfortunate, you know, I think there's an importance of decorum to these meetings. Um, I'm not going to go there. I think we're at a point where, where cooler heads really need to start prevailing with some of these subjects, um, you know, whether it's myself, Mr. Senza, or Mr. Bidnick, um, we talk a lot about a serious, a lot of serious issues when we come up here. And we talk to, talk about these from a place of good governance. Um, as unpleasant as some of these issues might be, nothing really is personal, it's strictly business. I'd like to keep it that way, and, uh, it's just unfortunate, you know, going into small claims court and other, other personal stuff and aspersions, we've never done that in any of our comments, I can only speak for myself, but it's just unfortunate. Um, so I want to make it known, last week, we had another significant development with some of the ongoing ethics issues involving this board. There was a case before the disciplinary review board... There was a case before the disciplinary review board of the former board attorney, Mr. Subsy. That was docket number twenty-three dash nine-two. And it's a forty-one-page decision. It's a public document. It's not on the Supreme Court website. It'll be up there soon. If anybody would like a copy of it, I would be happy to provide it. And essentially, it's a stunning rebuke of how this board has handled legal services in the past. And I'll admit, you know, we've got some new faces on the board. I think things have improved. I think things have changed positively since that firm has parted ways with the district. But I still think there's some significant concerns that, speaking from a good governance issue, we need to address going forward. And I think it would go a long way towards restoring public trust to acknowledge some of those issues. So I'm going to read a pertinent quote from this decision. And essentially, they rebuked Mr. Subsy for assisting a faction of board members in secretly compiling a dossier on Ms. DeSenza. It's it's really unacceptable. And every tribunal we've presented this to, it's obviously the subject of pending litigation, every tribunal we've presented this to so far, whether myself or Ms. DeSenza, they have agreed with our ethical concerns. Mr. Subsy, according to the DRB, violated RPC 1.7A1 and 2 by, quote, "representing a majority of the BOE members in connection with their inquiry into whether DeSenza, their fellow BOE member and political opponent, had engaged in any misconduct during an election season," which I was a candidate in. Respondent's preparation of the memorandum was directly adverse to the interests of DeSenza. And they said it created a significant risk that his representation of the BOE as a whole would be materially limited by his decision to assist the BOE members who sought to investigate DeSenza, who remained unaware that respondent had been tasked with completing the memorandum until sometime after the BOE had filed a complaint against her with the SEC. And additionally, Mr. Subsy was also found liable in terms of his involvement with union matters while his wife, Jackie Subsy, was employed by the district. This is a basic ethical principle. If you have an attorney, you need to have an attorney that all board members can come to and and trust. Your attorney can't be on both sides of the negotiating table. It's a fundamental governance issue. You can separate the personalities and the contentiousness of the election and the litigation, but it's a good governance issue. And I really think that the DRB and their members and their very thoughtful forty-one-page opinion, they kind of touch on some of the stuff that me and Ms. DeSenza have brought up over the years. Unfortunately, it's human nature. When you have lifetime connections to employees, it really is difficult to act objectively. And I I've seen, you know, in in our case for for OCN-l six-seven-four-twenty-three, the Open Public Meetings Act case, I saw some very concerning legal bill entries from the Capehart Skatchard firm. We're reviewing tapes of our public comments during these meetings. Again, the truth might be unpleasant, but everything that I have come to this podium and spoken about has a citation to either a docket number or an Oprah request. I I think in terms of some specific action items, I think we need to revisit just having these boilerplate policies that we get from Strauss Esme. I think they're not serving the district well. I think Policy 0174, I think it's very troubling how that policy has been adhered to. And I think maybe in the policy committee, it might make sense to take up Policy 0174 and look into the way that we utilize legal services in the district. I'll thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Any other comments? John Wayne in the, yeah.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Chris Barker of Lynn Oak Harbor. I just want to take the opportunity to thank the board. My daughter, Kira Barker, was here this morning. She got an award for reading over the summer. And she really got very excited by the letter, and she was thrilled. She looked forward to it all week. But I have some additional comments I'd like to talk about. I'd like to talk about the Milpon School. I do have a son there. This year's kindergarten class, they lost their art, music, technology, and library specials. They lost thirty minutes of instructional time per day, which equates to more than two weeks of instructional time for the year. They're losing even more instructional time with the bathroom breaks because they don't have bathrooms or sinks in their room, which leaves a teacher alone in the room with twenty-two to twenty-four kindergarten students per class. The classrooms, they don't have Paris. They don't have a SIPs reading instructor entering their entering their classrooms. These things were all part of my daughter's kindergarten, which my son does not have. It seems to me that the goal of incorporating universal pre-K seems to have come at the expense of my son, who's already enrolled in kindergarten. My five-year-old son is essentially self-contained in a room with one teacher, twenty-one peers, and little support for the teacher or other students. The loss of specials has not been rectified despite parents, including myself, previously reaching out to building and district admin. To the best of my knowledge, my son's teacher is not certified or trained in music, art, or technology. My son has not had the opportunity to visit a building library to learn about technology, browse or borrow books. These are all things that, again, my daughter had access to just two years ago. I think what the district has done to my son is unacceptable. I don't want to hear rhetoric about improving test scores and achievement when the board seems to place no value on establishing a well-adjusted learner. I've had to fight constantly and advocate for my daughter to get the the GNT program at Lynn Oak Harbor. I haven't heard anything about that so far this year, and it's middle, end of October. As a lifelong resident of Lacey Township, I'm disheartened and angry. I have unfortunately begun to consider alternative school options for my children. No matter how dedicated and wonderful my children's teachers are, they simply cannot supplement all that you have taken from them. Without specials, clubs, and support staff, and safe facilities, I just feel like we need them now, and it was a mistake to get rid of them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I saw, I was going to say, I saw another hand.
Richard Bidnick. Good evening, Lacey citizens and members of the board. After the recent court case with Mr. Subsy, I think it's become very obvious about certain things. There is a perception that is that is taking place by a few members who are still sitting on this board who are compromised. What I mean by compromised is there's a confidence issue about you having the best interest of the taxpayers and the school district at heart. I mean, it's quite obvious. There's been, this is what the third case that I've actually listened to or zoomed in on the hearing. There's a serious issue with all of this. And I think you need to look at yourself in the mirror and ask yourself, what kind of a role model are you for our students? When you go and dig up dirt on your opponents, use the taxpayers' money to do it, and just because you're trying to be vindictive. This is not what public education is supposed to be about. And we have a serious issue with this. And I'm asking as a taxpayer and a representative of many people in this town who do speak to me, that the three board members who were involved in this, that you think about what I'm saying. I think you should resign. Because there's going to be further court cases that are going to shame the school district from your behavior. And I think if you really want to have some dignity left, that you will do the right thing. I'm asking you on behalf of the citizens of this town, who we can't afford to be spending thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money on vindictiveness and game-playing. It's just time to like, you know, you have to accept the fact this went all the way to the Supreme Court. It's out there. Everybody's going to be reading it. I'm just saying, this is my my personal opinion and many people's opinion in this town that I talked to. Okay, so, Mr. Peters, it was totally not cool for you to make personal comments about members of the public who you are accountable to. You don't see me or other members making personal attacks against any board member, as none of this has ever been personal. I've often said this. This is never personal with me because I don't know any of you personally. But maybe what I'm saying is the truth, and the truth hurts. Ms. Claus, you mentioned that I should put forward my proposals for changes needed to improve this district at the last school board meeting. I'm prepared to read them off to you right now. One, allow the public to vote on the budget again, the way it used to be. Give the power back to the people where it belongs. After all, it is our money. Two, fire the superintendent and hire someone who has proven success of turning around an underperforming school district, such as a Michelle Ree protege. If you don't know who she is, I suggest you read her book, Radical: Fighting to Put Students First. She's a fearless and pioneering advocate for education reform. She draws on her life story and delivers her plan for better American education in our schools. And Ree's goal is to ensure that laws, leaders, and policies are making students, not adults, our top priority. She outlines concrete steps that will put us on a dramatically different course. Informing her critique or her extraordinary experiences in education, her years of teaching in inner-city Baltimore, her turbulent tenure as chancellor of Washington DC Public Schools. Ree draws on dozens of compelling examples from schools she's worked on and studied from and students who left behind from unspeakable home horrors and thrived in the classroom, to teachers whose groundbreaking methods have produced unprecedented leaps in student achievement. If you have to double the salary for a new superintendent, do it to attract the best possible individual who has drive, determination, and focus, and who has courage, because they're going to need it. And I'm sorry to say this, Superintendent Vanessa, you are a nice person, but you are in over your head. And during COVID, your policies lacked courage. And no great leader can succeed if they don't even believe in themselves. And I'm sorry to say this. This is not personal. Three, add performance evaluations attached to student achievement in contracts for teachers and severe penalties for those who are not performing at the highest level. Four, create a citizens committee on the budget for the taxpayers to have actual input to the budget process. I can I ask for an extension? I don't have much longer to go.
All right, real quick.
Okay. Five, make all employees be subject to random drug testing. Six, add goals and objectives to all administrators' contracts which are enforceable and must be met with specific timeframe. Seven, school board committee meetings should be open to the public and not done in private. Eight, privatize the school lunch program. Save the taxpayers' money and give the students better food. Stop worrying about the friends and family and run this district like a business with a bottom line. And my final comment is this. To the parents in our school district, you do have an option. You can take advantage of the New Jersey School Choice Program. Just look it up online. There are other schools where you can send your children, and Lacey will have to pay the tuition to send your child there. Since this school district refuses to reform, you as parents have an out. It's about your kids and their one shot at good public education. Please do the right thing by them. Thank you.
There any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move in, okay. You had that look on your face. I thought you were going to talk.
Hi, my name is Betsy Cross. I came from Wall Township. So I've just been kind of following what's been happening in the news, and I thought I would make a trip down here and watch a meeting. I thought I thought the presentations were good. I was really impressed with that eighteen-to-twenty-one transition program. And I'm I'm really not sure about Wall, what they have, but I thought you did an excellent job on that. I mean, totally, I could see how you could bring kids in here from other towns. I mean, that was amazing. So it's something I'm definitely going to look into for Wall. That was interesting what he just said about the New Jersey School Choice. Interested in looking that up. The map testing, you know, I thought that was a good presentation. I'd like to see it online. I thought I thought you did a good job with with the numbers there. With legal services, I couldn't tell who your attorney was because it just says board attorney. You know, I thought maybe you'd have a name up there. Like, you don't even say who the law firm is. That would be helpful. I was, um...
I like to fly low under the radar.
Wait, who is it?
I said I like to fly low under the radar.
Wait, I I couldn't understand you.
I said I like to fly low under the radar.
Oh, fly under the radar. What firm are you from?
I'm with Cleary Giacobi. I'm the substitute attorney, just covering for tonight.
Okay. Let me see. And just following, you know, there's it's just so easy to get public information now. And, you know, I did see the information about the recent lawsuit that you have. So that's what really caught my interest in coming down here. You know, those are not good news articles to be in, and nobody knows it better than Wall Township. We have one scandal after the next, and I've been doing this for eleven years there. So I said, let me come down here and see. But I was not, I was not, you know, I was saddened to see what happened. You know, if you're going against somebody that was, you know, going against the board members, we see, you know, we see that too in Wall. And you and you lose out on good candidates. You know, so I hope you change your ways. I I I don't know enough to say that you should resign. I I really got to look at the case. But I'm very interested in reading all forty-one pages, and I will do it. So, um, thank you for your time, and I'm going to bring home these documents and compare them to what Wall does. And if we're not doing, I liked how you do that fall and the spring, that testing. I don't even know if they do that. So, you know, my son's out of school now, but I still keep I still keep involved. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. Any other comments? Seeing none? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee reports. Mrs. Claus, you want to start with policy tonight?
Sure. It was myself, Mrs. Armato, Mr. Conady, and Dr. Pereira. We started out with Policy nine-two-seven-zero for homeschooling and equivalent education. We talked about possibly having those students participate in athletics. We did have some concerns, questions about the liability, qualifications, and eligibility. So before we bring it to the rest of the board, we're going to get some advice from our attorney, and Dr. Pereira is going to speak to administration to get their opinion as well. So there's more to come on that. We are abolishing Policy three-four-three-two sick leave and four-four-three-two. Last month, we adopted another policy, so that's why we're abolishing those two. Strauss Esme has combined the policy and regulation guide three-four-three-two and four-four-three-two into the newly-developed policy and regulation guides one-six-four-two-point-zero-one, which we've already had a first read last month. The other policy and regulation we talked about was five-four-six-zero, the bridge year pilot program. This is also being abolished tonight. Let's see. Strauss Esme developed this policy and regulation in May 2021 to address the requirements of the bridge year pilot program. Last graduating class to be eligible to participate in the bridge year would have been would have graduated in 2022. We also talked about Policy six-six-two-zero. We just revised it. It's just being changed from a hundred dollars to a hundred and twenty-five for petty cash. We revised Policy eight-five-zero-zero for food services, and we abolished eight-five-four-zero for school nutrition program, and Policy eight-five-five-zero for meal charges outstanding food service bills. We're also abolishing that. The Working Class Family Anti-Hunger Act revised several New Jersey statutes. The revision to the statute was newly-created statute requiring extensive revisions to existing policy eighty-five-hundred, eighty-five-forty, and eighty-five-fifty. existing policy 8500, 8540, and 8550. In response to the revisions, it is recommended that the policy 8540 and 8550 to be abolished and revised to policy 8500 and incorporate the provisions to guides 8540 and 8550 to be adopted. Nothing for co-curricular safety and security. We talked about the reprogrammed radios under other. We also talked about board comments, about the structure of our, our comments, and tentative workshop dates to follow. And that was it.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Claus.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna report on curriculum. It was Mrs. Armato, Mr. Peters, myself, and Mr. Zalinski. We went over the achievement presentation that you saw tonight. We talked about the emergency virtual or remote instruction program. He shared the plan with the committee that is required to be updated yearly. In case of an emergency closing that extends for more than three days, the district would convert to remote instruction, primarily utilizing the one-to-one Chromebooks as the vehicle for instruction. I don't think we've had three days of snow in years, but you never know. Let's see. The Safe Return Plan update, this is an ESAR requirement. Every six months, this plan is required to be updated, and the board approved every six months as a requirement of the district being a recipient of the ESAR funds. Under Special Education, NJCIE presented to Lacy High School and Middle School ICR teachers, special ed teachers, on effective co-teaching on October 6. Mr. Bond and Mr. Dowd are continuing to meet with Lacy High School teachers and working with NJCIE on follow-up PD. CPAG had their first meeting last night.
Yes.
Mr. Bond and Mrs. Krasowski Mallory will be presenting updates in special education to the group, and that's what was covered, correct? Under Community Relations, the Field of Dreams Flag Football Game was a success. I heard it was fabulous and so much fun. Intergenerational Barnicot Lighthouse Visit is October 20. The intergenerational club continues to be a group that brings the community together with students from all of our schools and all of our grades. We reviewed the new 2023-24 Transportation Handbook. This was built and edited by our Transportation Department and will be distributed after we approve it to all transportation staff. We updated the social worker, or we re-reviewed the social worker job description. And mark your calendars for March 15. That is gonna be our Health and Wellness Professional Development Day, and they've been looking for presenters and ideas. Under Other, we reviewed the School Safety and Security Plan Statement of Assurance that is required every year, and the School Self-Assessment for Determining Grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, which you saw tonight. And then I'm gonna report on Finance because Mr. Plino was coaching tonight, so he wasn't able to make it. Mr. Plino, Mrs. Claus, and myself attended, and Mrs. Silva, sorry, and Mrs., Dr. Pereira, were at the Finance Committee meeting. We talked about the STEM Room Project. This project is substantially complete. Many of the punch list items have been completed. The Fire Alarm Project Update, again, punch list was completed and provided to the contractor last week. The High School HVAC Project Update, the units are approximately 14 weeks out, so we're waiting for them to come in. Mrs. Silva updated the committee on the status of the referendum. The Architect provided a preliminary project list. We reviewed that. The ROD Grant, she updated the committee, Mrs. Silva updated the committee on the status of the award, and we received the preliminary eligibility cost letters. We talked about the preschool, getting that award. We also got funding and updates to, for fencing installation and small toilets to be ordered because there's small people in those buildings. Mrs. Silva led a discussion of the comprehensive maintenance plan, and we talked about the lockers at Milpon. They're gonna be painted over the November break, all different colors to make it bright and cheerful for our preschoolers and kindergarteners. Grant Committee update, there are a couple of grants that they've put in for. No, no answers yet, no. Budget Calendar, we discussed the new budget calendar. We picked out some dates for board workshops, tentatively set, first one December 20, and then again January, March, and July. This is from, I saw Mr. Scalen in the audience before. This was his idea a couple of years ago to do that, and it's good. It works out very good. We talked about raising the sub-nurse rates because it's hard to get substitute nurses, and we're one of the lowest in Ocean County, so we've talked about that. And I think that's it.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go right ahead.
In regards to social workers, how many do we currently have? Well, not enough?
Not enough.
You think we need more?
Mr. Bond, how many?
Eight, four.
We have four social workers, and we're gonna hire more?
For the whole district?
No, no, it's an updated, updated job description, not hiring more.
Okay, that's all it is, it's just an updated...
We're hiring one for preschool. Yeah, it's an updated job description, not hiring anybody.
All right, thank you.
And that's covered by the grant?
That is covered. The social work for preschool is covered by the grant, yes. So we'll have five.
Can we get some art teachers and libraries?
Not through the PEA grant, no.
Okay.
Okay, do you have a comment?
I do.
Okay. So at this time, I'm going to speak on behalf of the entire board. We're gonna, I want to congratulate on behalf of all of us, congratulate all our little readers tonight. They came here so proud of themselves, what a great program. I want to congratulate Joseph Morales and Autumn Maggin as Seniors of the Month, our unsung hero, Brody Sager, and our Staff of the Month, James Brannick and Elizabeth Shepherd, if I said it correctly. I want to also, on behalf of all of us, thank our administration, in particular, Michelle Mallory and Will Zalinski, for putting together one of the best, according to the state, the best grants written up, and we got 3.3 million, the second highest in the state. So congratulations, not only to them, but to everyone else that worked on it and the preschool committee. Every week they meet, every week they go through a lot of work getting this ready, and it's gonna continue. So congratulations and thank you.
Ms. Downing, just for a moment, you are part of that committee as well, by the way.
Yeah, but I don't want to say that.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, I'm so glad you presented the 18 to 21 program and showed the pictures. It is such an important program, and one that I think is, you've, you've done a wonderful job putting this together, and I think it's, I think every, every district should have it, really. Thank you. Does anyone else have anything, comments, or questions, board members?
No.
No. Okay. Well, let's move on to new business. You all received a green paper with, yeah, gotta get the first page. Addendum to October 2023 Board Agenda, so I will try to reference that as we go along. Okay, number one, new business, needing minutes. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call. Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Items three and four, budget transfers and S-1701 reporting. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Peter's?
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, I need to abstain on Manchester BOE, please.
Thank you. And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Items three and four, budget transfers and S-1701 reporting. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Peters?
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. The next one is items five through 17, if you just be patient while I read what they are. Sale of solar renewable energy credits, S-Rex, receipt of funds from Special Olympics of New Jersey, acceptance of ROD grant funding, middle school RTU replacement, transfer of funds from Capital Reserve, 2024-25 budget calendar, approval of agreement for private police activities, acceptance of bids and award of contract for cafeteria supplies, technology equipment renewal, purchase of educational goods and services, the creative curriculum for preschool, purchase of educational goods and service, creative curriculum cloud, digital, purchase of educational goods and service for AP US History textbook, sale or disposal of assets, and lastly, use of facilities. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Number 12. Technology equipment rental. We're at $7,000 a month for phones?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
That's always been.
Good to speak to you, Sharmeen, though, right?
Yep.
Any other questions?
Could we just talk about the ROD Grant, number seven?
The what?
If Sharon has any information about the ROD Grant.
So the ROD Grant, we're, number seven, we're just accepting the ROD Grant. This is for the HVAC at the middle school. We applied for multiple projects, some of it being HVAC at the high school, roofing at the high school. We also did get approved for roofing at the high school. At this moment, it doesn't look like we got approved for the HVAC at the high school. I am questioning that, and hopefully we'll get an answer on that. But as of right now, we only got approved for HVAC at the middle school and roofing at the high school, so.
Any other questions, statements? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Yes.
And second?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes to everything but 15. 15, no.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Okay, the next one is transportation and tuition, items 15 through 27. No. Could I have a motion?
15 to 27?
18 to 27. Sorry.
I'll make that motion.
I think you missed 16, 17.
Yeah, use of facilities.
Yeah, I did that.
No. We did that. I'll make that motion. Thank you, Kim. I need a second.
Second.
This is for items 18 through 27.
Okay.
Any comments, questions? Okay, could I, roll call, please?
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is transportation and tuition, items 15 through 27. No. Could I have a motion?
15 to 27?
18 to 27. Sorry.
I'll make that motion.
I think you missed 16, 17.
Yeah, use of facilities.
Yeah, I did that.
No. We did that. I'll make that motion. Thank you, Kim. I need a second.
Second.
This is for items 18 through 27.
Okay.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Okay, could I, roll call, please?
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Okay, the next one is items 28 through 36. We have number 36 as amended by the addendum that you received. Could I have a motion?
Motion, Peters.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Okay, the next one is items 28 through 36. We have number 36 as amended by the addendum that you received. Could I have a motion?
Motion, Peters.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Items 28 through 36.
What? What'd you say?
Thirty-seven. Thirty-seven.
You were on 37.
I'm sorry. I'm circling the wrong one on here. Yeah, 37 through 38, just two, right?
Yes.
Question?
Policies and policies and regulations.
I have a question.
Sure.
Can you tell me what school lunch program biosecurity plan is?
Yeah, so we, well, I'm gonna jump in. It's a new policy. It's just a policy to ensure that our food in the cafeteria is not tampered with.
Tampered?
So they like randomly check.
Okay, just make sure I heard the right word.
Yeah, and right, and so to Mrs. Claus's point, random checks, there are some procedures that are outlined, but it is a new policy.
Okay, thank you.
Could I have a, do we have a motion?
Nope. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Item B, donations. On behalf of the entire board, I'd like to thank everyone for their generous donations. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second. Roll call. Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes. Items 39 and 40, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second. Roll call. Mrs. Armato?
Yes.
Mr. Conady?
Yes.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, no walk-ons tonight?
No walk-ons.
Okay, could I have a motion then to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.